Welcome to the Spent the Rent Podcast. I am your host, Patty Rose. My guest today is a candidate for city council in Springfield, Oregon's Ward Three, Chris McAllister. Chris, welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me.
This is a real honor to get to talk to you. We have never met, so it's really nice to meet you. But a good friend of ours, mutual friend, James Barber, was like, you gotta get him on the show ASAP. And we kind of shuffled our schedules around and we made this happen on a kind of a different time than I normally do. So this is really cool and it's going to be a great chance to get to know you. I know that in Springfield ballots are out and we have, you know, I already filled mine out and sent it off. And I'm glad I had heard enough about you before this because I casted my vote for you for city council, which was cool. And so you're running for city council and your slogan is working on better. What does working on better mean to you?
Well, thank you for having me and I'd love to talk about that. Working on better is a strategy that I have where I know that no matter what I'm doing, I can always do better. And if I were ever at quote unquote best, it means I have a whole lot more to learn. Because as we reach each plateau, we move on and the challenges change and the obstacles change. And so working on better means I'm constantly striving to do better by myself, by the community and by the people in general.
That's awesome. So you've grew, you grew up in Springfield. You haven't, you've moved away and then came back. Is that true?
That is correct.
Tell us some of the places that you've lived.
So predominantly I'm Springfield born, Springfield raised, then I went to Texas for six years with my stepfather. And then we moved back to Springfield and I've been in Springfield ever since.
That's awesome. Yeah, this is where I, I was born in Salem, but my dad had moved to the area, to Lane County, to Springfield primarily. When I was a little kid and then I, I lived with my mom and then I moved in with him. And so I went to sixth grade on and then I transferred and graduated from South Eugene. So I consider Springfield to be my hometown. And now that I've bought a home, we bought it, a home in Springfield and, you know, kind of a jokingly or joking thing, I'm actually a write-in candidate now for the precinct committee. I'd say it's a joke, but I'm seriously wanting to get more involved. And so this is really cool. The, now that I've gotten to bump elbows with people like yourself, I'm seeing that there just needs to be more citizen candidates, more people that are average people that have different voices. And one of the things about you that gives you a different voice is that you are an unaffiliated voter. So you're not registered with the party. And so tell us about why you came to that conclusion to run unaffiliated.
Well, I've never been in a party since I've been able to vote. As a kid who grew up during the Clinton era, as a kid who grew up through the bushes, it's like, there is a lot of things that I didn't quite understand why our country on either side was going a certain way. And as a non-affiliated voter, Springfield is, is a, is a mixed community. There are many different views that don't quite fit in anybody's cookie cutter. We are Springfield first. We are working hard. We are people who want to solve problems. And I felt that this is a nonpartisan race. This is supposed to be about the city views and the city needs. And so I felt in order, instead of picking a party either way, knowing that my views don't fit into those cookie cutters because they're crafted from Springfield up.
So now on the ballot, I got it. I'm registered as a Democrat and like you, I would probably consider myself to be more unaffiliated. But I've, because of Bernie Sanders and for different reasons, I've chose to, to this time around, register as a Democrat. Are you on the ballot for people that are unregistered with the party then?
Yes, sir. The cool thing about our local government is our local elections are at the same time as the primaries. So our nonpartisan elections are on everybody's ballot.
Oh, that's cool.
I don't get to pick between Peter DeFazio or Doyle Canning. I don't get to pick between Mayor Venice and any of the number of people because those are in Eugene.
I got you.
But the partisan races rather, those are different as opposed to what everybody else gets. You get judges, you get counsel.
Yeah, that's cool. So what is something that you'd like to tell potential voters?
That Springfield has a whole lot of opportunity and potential. And we have pockets of our community that have never been outreach to before this year. And the fact that there are three people running to fill an empty seat, that Springfield has changed in its future, no matter what.
Yeah.
So I encourage voters to look at the candidates that are wanting to bring positive inclusion. I don't think that you're going to find any of the candidates not doing that. What are the plans to help bring jobs into Springfield and keep jobs into Springfield? And how are we incorporating the younger generations into a system that was built by people who are currently at their peak? Or maybe are retiring? How do we keep our community growing and going? And so candidates need to be asked questions. Ask us the questions.
Absolutely. So where do you see Springfield in 10 years?
I see Springfield revitalizing through reversing our employment trends. We have declining industries. I think that we're going to start to repurpose our industries. Cross laminated timber is a good example of it. We make the glue here in Springfield while it goes and is processed in Riddle. And then it's shipped back here to build these big projects like the mayor's parking garage concept. I see this wood being possibly the next manufactured homes savior. It has got a lighter weight, has a stronger load bear. It is able to mitigate sound easier and it can burn slower. So therefore it is safer to have in homes. And so this could be our hope for our housing crisis. We need to start building homes in our community for the people that we know are going to graduate our schools. Then we build with developers on the outside of that, the people that we're bringing in to help with these jobs that we're going to be building. We just need to retool and we're doing so with our technical sector. We're doing so with our education sector, integrating our schools to build trades. And that's where I see our future. In 10 years, we're gonna, I hope that we have a Springfield standard where people know that something was built here and it's going to be built to stay, just like we are.
Wow. Yeah. This is a breath of fresh air, Chris, I have to admit. Because you know, a lot of times, and I'm not trying to throw people under the bus, but when you get the one party, the left on the Democrats, they want to talk about ways that they can help the less fortunate. And that's all they talk about, you know? Now you have been doing your part to help the less fortunate. There's no question of that. And you can tell us a little bit about that. But what I'm saying is, is that, and we'll get to that in a minute about the shelter at the memorial building. But the right in Springfield, in my experience, they want to talk about business, you know? You know, and so you're kind of bringing this from this happy medium where you're like, we can focus on both. And that's really, that's really an important thing. And I like what you just said about let's get the people that are going to graduate from our schools to be able to buy new homes in our town. That's really cool because that's thinking about the potential future working class. And that is something sometimes I feel like the Democrats will leave out, you know? You know, because they don't, they look at the people that need help, but they don't think about who's going to pay for it. You know, and so that's a breath of fresh air, I have to admit. And I know I'm going to get some flack for saying that, but I don't care. So, so you know, campaigning in the COVID-19 shutdown has definitely been a challenge. What has, or how has COVID-19 affected your, your campaign and your ability to get the word out about your campaign?
Well, yes, sir. It's a game changer for sure, both on the ability to rally help to get out and get the vote out, but also to, to try and meet new people and reach out to people. Now it's really closer to word of mouth and, and peer-to-peer exchange on social media than it has ever been. And so it becomes both less and more intimate at the same time. When you get Facebook ads from people you don't know, and like then they feel like you're selling them something, but you were told, hey, I should talk to this guy because he wants to talk about what to do with our parks. Or how do we help keep jobs in Springfield? And you're knocking on their door virtually and they're like, who are you? Are you spam?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're like, find it. They're like, let me find the X.
It's a lot harder to go place signs when you're doing social distancing. It's a, it's a lot interesting, like ideal spots where marketing and reaching out to people would normally be common. Going and talking to people at the library, going and seeing things. It's like, that's all null and void. And so it's truly either in service or on the waves that people are being hurt.
I think innovation, I think the innovation though, with these tools like what we're using, we're using Zoom. And I'm going to be broadcasting this for the first time ever. I'm going to broadcast a new episode on Facebook Live today. So if you're watching this on Facebook Live, you know that I'm doing that. But still, I think the innovation is good because what it's doing is it's getting people that maybe have not been comfortable with this technology in the past, more comfortable with it, more interactive. And so one thing I talked to Chris Wig about, who works for, he's on the board for Willamalein, I'm sure you're familiar with Chris Wig. He was talking about how candidates and elected officials are approachable people. They're our, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, you know? And so you can ask us questions. And, and so that's really cool. Where is the best place online for people to reach out to you?
Currently I have a Facebook page, Rooted in Springfield is my slogan. So if you type rooted in Springfield, you pull me up. I am updating that. We had some technical difficulties with our website, so we're hoping to reboot that soon. Tech support has been affected by COVID greatly. I'm just going to put that out there. But yes, rooted in Springfield. I also have my phone number. I can give that out. It's on my website. It's also 541-517-9723. Send me a text, give me a call. Please know that I work graveyards most of the time and I will get ahold of people when I can.
Well, that's cool. I'm going to put the link, I already did. I created the show notes for this episode. And I, I put the link to your Facebook page, Rooted in Springfield. And so I encourage anybody listening to this to follow that page to see some updates. And there's some really cool stuff on there. There's people that have given you some, some critiques and you know, positive feedback and whatnot that you've been posting and sharing. And so there's a lot more information and your bio, I really was impressed with, just the human element of it. So I encourage anybody listening to read that. It's, it's a really good way to get to know you. And there's some other videos. Hopefully you'll share this video. You know, so you've got a, you're very busy right now, running, running a campaign, the co-director of Carry It Forward, and then you're working as the shelter manager at the memorial building. I'd like to focus first on Carry It Forward. What is Carry It Forward and what do you do for them?
Carry It Forward is a nonprofit that does direct service for unhoused folks. It was created by Arwin Moss de Spain, who is my co-director and is the executive director of Carry It Forward. What we do is we work with unhoused folks to provide services to other unhoused folks. We currently do a majority of the laundry in Eugene for the rest stops, where we have trained vocationally some of our unhoused folks who are either in the camps or who are out of shelter completely. We have then taken that model and used it for emergency response during the winter strategies. Our unhoused team helps serve over 1,200 unhoused folks with tents, sleeping bags, propane and heating implements to stay alive during our shelter days and our non-shelter days in the winter. We currently have been doing camp cleanups and where we help people who have to move their camp to preserve their stuff in a dignified manner, even if the choice to leave was not theirs. So we've helped businesses where we've cleaned up needles and feces because of the fact that some of our people are not where they need to be in order to be more responsible for those needs. But neither do the businesses have to deal with that, nor should they.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that because in my last episode, it's kind of interesting how this worked out schedule wise. My last episode, we talked about housing in Lane County and I threw it out there. That, you know, the barber shop, there's been multiple times because there's a little cubby behind it that it's been used as a toilet. And I'm glad that you have the heart and compassion and empathy to work with the unhoused, but also see the other side of it, some of the downsides. Now that's such a small percentage of the community that's causing the issues. And I want to drill that point home to people that these, it's just like any other situation. It's, it's, there's a few people and a lot of times they're people that are mentally ill. That, that are in a position, we have to still have empathy, even if they're making poor choices. I mean, that's just reality, you know? So I'm glad that you can see the, the both, you know, both sides of that. And I think voters in Springfield, a lot of them are going to be encouraged by that, you know? And, and I really, I think you have a good chance. And I know that, that this is just the beginning for you politically locally. So that's exciting. Is there a link to Carry It Forward? Is there a website or a Facebook page?
Yes, sir. CarryItForward.net.
Okay, I'll put that in the show notes as well. So now the big thing right now currently is that you are the shelter manager of the memorial building shelter project. And can you tell us a little bit about that? The memorial building is located, is the post office still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I, I remember as a middle school kid, shout out to Zach Basset. I know he runs the middle school dances for Willamalein. He, we used to go to those memorial building middle school dances. So currently, tell us what's happening at the memorial building.
And as a kid who was a homeless kid in Springfield, the memorial building and teen center had a big place in my, in my background. It's also one of my first jobs where I was a scorekeeper for the basketball games and the Willamalein mascot. So Willamalein building has been in our hearts as a middle school kid thought up for a long time. But right now it is currently being used as the COVID response for unhoused persons to shelter in place. As Carry It Forward took on the contract after St. Vincent de Paul went and shored up the fairgrounds, letting us serve Springfield in a, in a similar but different manner. We took possession of a 32-bed shelter. This is a shelter that's meant to protect people who do not have COVID symptoms from getting COVID symptoms. And so it's a shelter in place, meaning that it's not supposed to be come and go, that it's not supposed to be having a lot of visitors or outside use of the facilities. And so that's why we have restricted showers and restricted porta potties. And why we help people when they leave, go and be sustainable outside of our walls, but also letting people know that they can't come back and can't keep coming back just to hang out. So what we've been able to do is monitor people's health. We do daily temperature checks. We, if someone has a cough, we check in with them. We've been able to do telemedicine and bring doctors and counselors in for people so that they can help get their needs met without having to leave our walls. We've been a safe, clean, sober site for people to be off the streets. And so pretty much all the stereotypes we often hear are, are able to be mitigated in this type of setting. Whereas it is kind of against the mold of shelter by yourself. There are no options afforded us by the governor's decree on what to do with unhoused folks who have no legal place to be. So the county stepped forward and paid for the site to be used. And so the county is the one who has utilized its contract. Whereas the city of Springfield is working on what to do for people to shelter in place after these types of shelters either close or after the current wave of COVID is released from quarantine. And what do we do in the future if it comes back?
Right, this fall, which is probably going to happen. So you, you are at full capacity, correct?
We are close to full capacity because we are restricted by what environmental health says and should do from the county. They come in and visit us once a week. They make corrections. Are cuts too close? Do we have like enough hand washing sanitation sites, et cetera? We've made a request for safety reasons to adjust our design. And so because of that, we, we are currently a couple beds below capacity. But for all intents and purposes, we are full.
Yeah. So now if somebody was in a position where they would need to shelter there, do they just go there to talk to you? Is there a process?
Between 10 and 10 AM and 2 PM is when we take in new applicants if we have openings. And so they would come to the gate at the, at the front on A Street side. And they would wait in line appropriately, distance approximately six feet between each person. And then they would hear from the shift manager who would be talking to them about what the expectations are. If you are willing to stay in place as much as possible. If you are working as an essential worker or have been approved for work, that you have a note from your, your provider. That's what's happening. And that you can agree to be respectful to both the community members, the workers and your fellow guests and help create a drug-free and non-violent site. Then we would be able to take you in and do an assessment. The assessment is just where we input your data for the federal funding that helps our community. It's kept private and we read the privacy statement. And if you agree to all that, we give you a tour and welcome you in as one of our own.
How recently did this start? When did you open the doors?
We, as Carry It Forward took over at April 11th of this last month. The original contract, I believe, started the first or first week of April or the last week of March. We were not involved in that process.
Right. Now, how would you say so far, how has it gone? Is it going pretty well?
We have had mostly successes. We've had one loss. We had a person pass away on our site.
Oh, man.
And with that in mind, we also have been able to house several people. We've been able to get several people on OHP. We've been able to get several people back on their meds. And so we've been able, whether it's diabetic meds, seizure meds or mental health meds, people have been shut out of a lot of their services. We've been able to get people back going into appointments. So even while many doctor's offices have closed their doors for drop-in appointments, they can call us. We have an iPad where our guests can talk to them. And we've been able to get prescriptions dropped off or filled and our staff going to get them for our people. So at some points we've been able to cross barriers that have not been able to be crossed during non-COVID times. But it's because of that dialed approach. It's that understanding and individualized care.
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, nobody wants to be boasting in this current climate that, oh, this is a success story. You know, because none of this is a success story, but it sounds like, it sounds like things are going really well. I mean, there's going to be very difficult, challenging things that happen in a shelter, you know? And so I'm, I'm, it's sad to hear of, of losing one of your people staying there. That's, that can never be easy. But what you just talked about, helping people get back on their feet and with their medical care, that's incredible. You know, that's really awesome.
May I follow up with another statement about the people we hire?
Yes.
So we have brought over 30 jobs to Springfield that did not exist in our, before this contract existed. We are hiring unhoused folks who are in our shelter. We are hiring unhoused folks who serve in the camps around our community. We have hired peer support specialists. We have hired former EMTs. We have hired displaced workers who have not been able to work in a job that paid their bills a long time. And we pay $15 an hour. Our, our executive director gets the same pay as our newest hire.
That's awesome.
We have been able to bring jobs to people who are struggling. We have stay-at-home moms working for us, doing some of the duties that don't need to be on-site about. This is an idea about how Springfield can resonate for all of Springfield. And the people who are on-site, who are working or volunteering, because some of them just want to volunteer and give back to a place that is keeping them out of the blackberry bushes, so to speak. This is really restorative and communicative of what we can do as a community. And after COVID, whereas I know this site will not be the site for this, I really, really hope that we remember what we did here and that we keep it forward.
And learn from it and then, you know, carry it forward.
Yes, sir.
That's really cool. Changing gears a little bit and back to your run for, for office, for city council. One thing I like to ask people that are involved in politics, who are some of your political influences?
I grew up in Springfield under a myriad of both pragmatic thinkers and progressive actors. And so Bill Morissette, John Lively, they have had a strong influence on me growing up. And I've also been looking, I'm a historian. I'm, I'm into old school thoughts. And so like, I take some of the ideas and considerations from the 30s. Some of the active people on the left and on the right. I look at Ike Eisenhower and how he rallied for infrastructure and helped build out systems that created safety nets. I look at, what should we call it? A couple of our governors, whether it's Governor Meyer, who was the first independent to lead among all of our states. And, and also like Tom McCall. It's like, how do we build up and keep things ours and keep things going? And so Leonard Stair is an active person I look up to. I like the way that he speaks through both contract as well as experience. And so I have a lot of influences that go across the board. And I'm just talking about my American politic influences.
Sure, sure. That's really cool, you know? And I'm, it's really awesome that your first, the way you answer that question starts in Springfield. You know, and I used to deliver the newspaper for the Springfield News when I was a little, a 12, 11, 12-year-old. And I thought it was pretty cool because I would deliver the paper to Bill Morissette's house, he was, when he was the mayor. And at that time, in the 90s, there was still this, this little bit of like this allure or awe-inspiring feeling towards elected officials. Now, now people are like, screw that scumbag. And we need to bring it back to that. And I think the way that we do that is exactly what you're doing by showing people that I'm just an average citizen for one. But for two, I'm listening to what you need and what your desires are to see your town head towards. And we're going to build that, you know, and that's really exciting. This is really cool. I can see just by talking to you for these few minutes that I'm going to have you back on the show in person as soon as we can. Because the work that you're doing with the shelter and with Carry It Forward, I have to say, a good friend of mine, Blair Conrad, and I think her husband's working with you. Blair Conrad was on my show early, early on and it was one of my most popular episodes. She was, she had turned her life around from being unhoused, addicted to drugs and in a really bad spot. And she today is, she has a place, she has a beautiful baby boy, she's married, she's happy, she's healthy. Times are tough right now, but they're getting by and perseverance is what drives them. And she and I had had conversations. She's like, I want to start a nonprofit. All of the things that she had told me that needed to be done are what you're doing. You know, and these were her brainstorming and her ideas about how you take the people that are inside of the, that are getting the help themselves, you enable them to be the people that are giving the help. And that's what paying it forward or carrying it forward is all about. The best way to help yourself is by helping others. I've found that through my battles with alcoholism over the years, that by giving back to anybody, that's really what drives you. And that's why I'm very open with that because I want to encourage people to know if an Irishman like me can quit drinking, anybody can do it. So, and that's just one thing, you know? And dealing with mental health, helping others is really what helps. And so I have to tip my cap to you on the work that you're doing with that because that's exactly somebody that's lived it, that's been homeless, like my friend, who I have a deep passion for our friendship and I care about her like family. She had told me that these are the things that she wanted to do. And so you're doing it. And I think that that's really exciting and I'm glad I wasn't aware of, of the extent of what it was that you did. And so it's really cool to get to know about that. So I, in the future, once we can actually have, once you can join me in this room and the audio and quality will be better and the video will be better, I look forward to that day. And you know, get a, at that time, you'll be an elected official and I, I, I really hope, you know? And I'm optimistic. So Chris, this is really great. Chris McAllister, city council candidate, Ward Three, Springfield, Oregon. Is there anything else you want to end with or?
Sure. I appreciate this opportunity. My platform is the relief platform. Reform, education, local base, inclusion, engagement, future focus. We, we're doing this together. We have lived experience. Our people rise when the challenge needs and we will not be gone when the cycle goes away. We are here to stay and that's why we are rooted in Springfield. That's why we're looking forward 2020. And that's why I ask for your vote and your support. Even if I don't get elected, I would like to encourage people to stay involved in our community. Our unhoused folks are the people who could be the next taxpayers, the next ratepayers, which will make our costs go down. And as we spread out in our UGB and bring people into the fold, your rates go down while our services go up. Power to the people and thank you for empowering people by educating voters, by reaching out to the candidates. And I ask that if you have the time and the ability, that you reach out to Corey and Johannes and see what they have to say.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. We're getting, the time crunch is coming. We've got such a short time to be able to do. I've considered doing an episode with like five minutes with, with different people and just trying to, I mean, I'll scramble and do my part. Remind me one more time so that I got it right. What is the website for Carry It Forward?
CarryItForward.net.
Okay, got it. So I got that and I'll throw that in the show notes. The song that I chose to end with today is out of print track. So this is kind of exciting. This is a song by a crew that I was in called Clowns of Class. And I thought it was fitting because it's simply titled, "I Try." And it's about just giving it an effort, you know? And so I thought it would fit this episode. So we're going to play that, you know, in a second. Chris McAllister, once again, Springfield. Chris McAllister, once again, Springfield, Ward 3, city council candidate. Please cast your vote for Chris McAllister. Make sure to mail your ballots or drop them at a Dropbox location on time. I don't know exactly when they need to be in the mail by, but the date is the 19th. So I've already got it done. So I encourage anybody over the next three or four days, get it done, folks. Fill out your ballots, also your census. You know, that's a very important thing for future stuff. Go online, census 2020, fill that out, people, because it takes five minutes. And it's very, very important for us to get accurate numbers and accurate counts so that we can get federal funding. And for so many different things, they're talking about redistricting, which could potentially bring more representation to Lane County in the national area. So that's really, really important to do your census and to mail in your ballots. This is an honor, Chris. It's really great to meet you.
Thank you.
So we're going to end this with a song. This is Clowns of Class with "I Try." Chris McAllister, thanks a lot.